Good evening. The regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the plate of allegiance.
Plate of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is that picture?
Yes. He's loading.
Okay, Sandy, if you could please state our mission statement and take roll call.
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide quality education that empowers students to be successful in the whole community. Board member Cunningham?
Here.
Board member Billings?
Here.
Board member Mashawn?
Here.
Board member Sutton?
Here.
And I'm board member Turner, I am here. And board member Steyer is absent with notice, won't do have a quorum. We also have our senior representative here, Joseph Pacino, but unfortunately Elizabeth, she was absent with notice.
Thank you very much. Before we approve our agenda, I need to make two changes, please. We are going to move everything down in our presentation, so we're gonna... Starting with letter B is going to be an unpaid leave of absent request, and then C is the consideration of our board and D is our budget. And then I'm going to add letter E to our action items for the unpaid leave request. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. So moved to the amended agenda. Support. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of the consent agenda. So moved.
Support.
Mr. Walts, did you have anything to...
You should have a revised personnel. We had a last minute or an addition regarding a second semester online mentor, so there were no questions regarding the regular meeting minutes or the FTE report. As far as the personnel report, Shelley Maida was an appointment. She was previously hired by the board, moving from a folder cook to an assistant cook. And then Adriana Rappman is coming in second semester online student.
Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I do. Brian, for the online mentor, just an overview of what exactly that means.
Sure, we have students that are in online courses as part of their schedule, and so part of being in an online course requires us to assign a mentor, and so oftentimes these are either teachers on their prep hour picking it up and so forth. We do not have any teacher select other than Ms. Rappman for that, so she will do the two-way communication that's required to counter as an FTE.
And then, is she assigned certain students or does she...
Yep.
How does it work?
Anybody who's assigned an online. We have one teacher who has one of her hours of the day is online. It's not those students, it's the other students throughout the hour. I think that's four hour. So these are first, second, third, fifth, sixth, and seventh hour. There's probably about less than 20, but I think around 10 to 15 of them. So she'll make sure she reaches out and touch base with them twice a week.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is our career and technical education month. Can I lead?
I will get us started, but I'm going to quickly hand it over to Mrs. Zabo. As you know, we always celebrate February as CTE month, and so we're excited to be able to highlight some of the programs and get a little bit in-depth with one of our newest tools. So I'm going to leave it to the building expert at least and turn it over to Mrs. Zabo.
Thank you. So for those of you that don't know, one of my absolute favorite things to talk about is career and technical education, because I believe that it truly just creates so many opportunities for our students, no matter if they're interested in going to a four-year college or university, or if they're looking to go to a trade school or go directly into the workforce. So I have just some facts, a little update about how all of our programs are going, and then obviously hopefully you've had the opportunity, and if you didn't when you first came in, to look at what our students have to say as well as the pictures. I highlighted one student, was highlighted in each one of our CTE pathways, as well as a quote from myself, just really about the value and the importance and what the students are learning. And it's really interesting, because none of the students were prompted like, hey, talk about this or talk about this. And I think that if you read each of them individually, each one of them truly is gaining something different from each one of our CTE classes. So currently, right now, 54% of jobs in Michigan require more than a high school diploma, but less than a four-year degree. And so that means that over half of the jobs that our students will be applying for are really looking for technical skills or some sort of credential. And I think that's really important, because we tell students that you don't necessarily have to go to school, you don't have to go to a four-year university, but the key thing is, is that you need to gather something, whether it's skills or a credential that a lot of the students are getting here in the building. That's really what future employers are looking for. In the 2022-2023 school year, and we don't have the updated number, 95.95% of students that were a CTE completer graduated high school, compared to about 81%, which is the state average. And so students that are enrolled in and complete a CTE program, over 14% go on to complete high school. And I think that really speaks about the importance of making connections with kids, and then also the value that the students are seeing in these programs. We currently, last year, had 483 CTE enrollments. That is double counting students, so ultimately, that's a lot. It's a lot of enrollments, and we are looking at about 362 separate students. So some of our students are enrolled in more programs, but over the past three years, we really have been looking to streamline our programs and also make offers or make course offerings that are more interesting to the students. Some program updates. This year, we have $138,000 or a little bit above that in our 61A funds, and basically that is the grant funds that directly come from the state of Michigan and can only be spent on program improvements in our CTE classes. So it goes from some of the day-to-day things. Our teacher cadets all get supply bags, which they carry to their placements. It's got everything from binders, crayons, markers, consumables, manipulatives, anything that they're working with their kids on. This year, some of the large purchases is we purchased laptops, and the laptop part for our TV broadcasting course, that is so the students can run the Adobe suite that they're going to be earning a credential in. Their credentials are a state requirement for all of our programs, and so we wanted to make sure, since that wasn't something, it's some souped-up tech stuff that I don't know what's fun about, but I know that the Chromebooks that they have would run that software. So there's going to be a class set that's open to all of the students. Also, this year, we updated our marketing books, and then also recently purchased a new dishwasher and an ice machine for the culinary room, just as they prepare for the opening, which I'm happy to say we're doing our soft opening next week, the week of February 28, and then we will do the larger opening once we get into the month of March. So the kids are starting off with, just they're doing an Asian buffet for the staff, and then they're going to do a Mexican-themed buffet for the staff, really just to kind of get their feet wet, let us do some sampling, which a lot of us already have done, and then it will be open to the public, so look for that. Also, this semester, we added, or this school year, we added a CTE data monitoring and reporting assistant. Her name is Jenny Sealek, and she has been a lifesaver with the 360-some students that we have in CTE. We need to hand-enter data for each one of those students each semester, everything from the grades to the courses they're enrolled in, to every one of their work-based learning experiences. So every time a kid goes on a field trip, has a guest speaker, we all enter that data in by hand. And so Jenny really has taken the lead with that. She's entering the data, and not only that, we'll be also required to follow up with all of our graduates upon graduation. And so before January 16th, she has to touch base with over 80% of our recent graduates and ask them survey questions, and so we were able to meet that mark as well because of her. Couple of the other things we're working on, I'm working with the AIS program, we're working on a year-three work-based learning experience, and so basically we're looking at how are we going to get the students where they're going to be able to spend a lot of their day in a job placement or an internship, and so getting all of the paperwork, making sure we're following the pupil accounting manual, making sure we have everything in order. We're hoping to roll that out once we figure out what students have signed up for that, and then how we can help partner with area businesses and get those students placed. Last year, we had 101 students earn credentials, and so with that being said, the state is now requiring each of our programs to offer credentials, so everything from Microsoft Word, PowerPoint, Excel. We have IT specialists in Python coding and HTML and CSS. This is the food handler through ServeSafe, also the food manager through ServeSafe. So the state puts out a list of credentials that students can take, and our teachers then have to choose off of that list, and then we have the students take that credential. And so the state is looking at, I believe the last mark they had was a 4.5% pass rate. Obviously, that's going to continue to increase every year as they roll this out. We had 101 students earn some sort of credential last year, so we're above that mark, but always looking to strive to how many more opportunities can we offer for our students. Couple of last things before I do want to turn it over, because we do have two student speakers, and then I also am going to debut our animatage machine that the majority of you were here to hear a lot about last year, but also see it in person. One of the other things that's really important to me is the business partnerships, and I know we have Jeff White here from Richmond Lennox EMT. Him and I had the opportunity, we were selected to speak at Leadership McComb this year. We're one of two, I think, CTE programs that Shannon Williams reached out to and said, you have such a strong partnership between an area business or an area service, a public service, and what you've been able to do within the school. So we were able to highlight that, you know, after COVID, the desire for many students to become EMTs was not necessarily there, and our program has, I think it's increased by over 300%. We had about three or four students, right now we have 17 in the program. And so looking for ways of how we can strengthen that partnership is also really important. But at this time, I'd like to invite Ivy and Jenna just to come up. I just wanted to ask them to share kind of some of their thoughts about what they've learned in their teacher cadet programs.
Through our program, it's really helped me, like, broaden my vision to kind of work with another teacher. It's given me experience working with others and, like, being in a different environment, so it can be kind of nerve-wracking, but I was able to select what kind of subject I wanted to go into, and I don't know, it's been a really great time, like, meeting my students and meeting my teachers and being able to help them out.
What could I... Sorry, I was just going to say, I was going to ask.
I'm in a fourth grade, well, I'm in a fourth grade class, but I'm there during their math type, and also there during their special time, so I'm able to go help, like, you were in music for the past month. We used to show our computers, but I've only been there once so far. So I've been able to help a lot with math, and it's been, I don't know, it's been fun, because that's, if I were to go to teaching, that's where I want to go, so.
Nice. Yes. We need you.
Okay, so I'm in the sixth and eighth grade part in middle school, and it's kind of a really funny age, because a lot of them are very, I don't want to say awkward, but they, it's just a silly age. It's cute, it's cute, but sometimes it takes a lot of patience, because they don't want to listen all the time, and it's hard to, like, sometimes it's actually hard to convince them, like, if I have something, if I have an idea, and some of them are just like, no, I just have to, like, accept that. I really just have to accept that sometimes. So that's one thing that I had to learn, because we've been in there since, like, November, so that was, like, very hard for me, to just accept that sometimes they don't want to listen. And normally I would have a hard time with that, but I'm a lot better with it now, but it's really fun being in there, because we go there Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, every week, and I don't know, like, even just, like, talking to some of the kids and, like, getting to know them better, it's just so fun, it's cute.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think that just is the testament to, again, you might not want to do this when you grow older or when you go on to college, but even some of the quotes, it's like, hey, I might not be going into this, but I've learned confidence, or I've gained interpersonal skills, or I've learned how to write a check. I might not become an accountant, but I've learned how to write a check. And I think really, it's that skill development that's at the foundation of our program. So last thing, I just wanted to show is a little sample of our animatage table. If you did not know, this was through a 61-seat grant last year that we wrote. This is the new age of basically where medical schools and any sort of cadaver labs have gone, because it is all digital now. And so if you go into many of the teaching universities, you'll see a room with five, six, seven, eight of these. If you go into our classroom, it generally lays flat, but one of the nice things is that it can raise and it can show people. Sometimes it's a little bit slow, but just to kind of give people an idea of what our students are able to see and what they're able to do on a regular basis, so. So basically, on the animatage table, there are a bunch of cadavers that are loaded. These were real people, so the history and what you're actually seeing in here is what the individual passed away from, what kind of genetic disorder they had, what kind of health disorder they had. So really, our students can come in and they really can cut at any point, and then because it is all electronic, we get updates all the time, so they'll add different images or cadavers, but it is all Wi-Fi based, so like, sometimes vacations, I just like click, 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 but I just have to remember, okay, once I do that. And then, so what it will do is it can, like, remove layer by layer, and so it identifies, I can pull off, you know, I can click off all the muscles. So if I'm instructing or I'm talking specifically about a different part of anatomy, I can go ahead and I can remove all of that and just click around. I can also start looking at the bones and taking those away, so you can see the spleen. All of this is, it's touchscreen, it's labeled, and you can go all the way down to, you know, as far down into the system as you want. A couple of the other things is that it also allows you the opportunity, so if you want to see what the dissection is, so if it was right here, see there, you can see the spine, you can see the arms, the way it's moving down, but again, all of this is here for our students at the fingertips. That is the cadaver part. There's everything from case library, functional anatomy, histology, and so in any, so some of these, like, for example, this one I can't use because I'm in the vertical, the vertical display, but everything on here is open for the students. A lot of times, if they come into school early, I'll just see them in the EMT lab, and they'll just start kind of clicking around. There's the option, and I want to go into this specifically, but you can play games, so there's different ways where they can do, like, identifying, you know, if I say, where's the spleen, and you have to click on the screen as fast as possible, so I just got rid of it, there's got the liver, but you can turn, you can turn it around, I mean, it works in all sorts of, all sorts of directions. So really, this is state-of-the-art technology that specifically our EMT students are working with, but obviously, there's so much information on here. If you are on Facebook, the students were able to, when they were learning about the birthing unit, they were actually able to see not only it happened, but really what is going on inside, because that's where a lot of times the emergency can happen. So knowing how would they respond during that situation, but just imagine, they're all standing around this table and they're watching it right in front of them versus seeing it in really an old video or something like that. So the options are endless, this is really amazing, and I just, everyone that's supportive of this, really, this is state-of-the-art, it's something that our students will really remember. So I will leave this, I don't know if I'll leave that up there, go back to the homepage, but there is a bunch of different, different students, and you can also do, you know, if you specifically want to talk about a different part of the anatomy, everything from the brain, they have a fetus, they have just the eye, the ear, so especially when they're learning about specific parts of the body, putting in, you know, a tube, and you're talking about how you put that in the throat, you can really look at just that specific part. So it's all right there, and it's pretty amazing. So I just wanted to make sure, I know one of the things that people had asked for once after they, after you guys approved it last year, the purchase, I think, we want to see it in action, so I thought now was a great time. So other than that, I don't know if anyone has any questions about CTE, but thanks for all the support and...
We got Carrie here.
What, is that Carrie?
We have Carrie here with our teacher cadet.
Yes, sorry. Yes, Carrie, thank you so much. Carrie Shaglin is here. She is our teacher cadet teacher. Right now, she has our first-year students, and, oh, we had such a demand, we had 31 teacher cadets, I think, right now, in terms of her having the first-year students, and then Ms. Parment has the second-year students. So our second-year students were able to start going to placement right off the bat, and then we also have a third-year student who is in for placement. She is planning on going into education and has kind of her path all out for her, or mapped out for her, so. So thank you for that support. Any specific questions about... I'll keep the table in here, so if anyone wants... Everyone's always like, I'm so afraid to touch it. I'm like, you really can't break it, so if anyone wants to click around after, feel free, it is there.
I don't have any questions, but I just, I love, I absolutely love all the little posters showing all of our kids and all of the program. Like, it's really, it's better than just seeing it on a piece of paper. This is really, I love how visual, I think it's pretty good.
Thank you. I have a question.
Yes.
So which, because my daughter's picking classes for next year, and I didn't see a whole lot of CTEs for options for 10th grade. The AIS was one of them. I didn't see a whole lot of them for that, or...
So computer programming, marketing, AIS, business management, teacher cadet, culinary... Yeah, so the ones that, so EMT is open at 11th and 12th grade because there's an age requirement for the national registry exam, so that one has an age requirement, so that one's the 11th and 12th grade, and then I also believe accounting is 11th and 12th grade, because it follows the pathway, but the other classes should, should be open for the 10th grade students, yes.
I just want to say thank you, because we have been asking to see that. That's what I just do. Those, those two girls, Ivy and Jenna, what's the other girl's name? I love the, kids just tell me no, or they don't want to do it, and I want to say, welcome to the world of teaching, you know? So maybe you realize, look at your teachers a little different, because yes, they have kids that say, no, I don't want to do that, but that's, that's cool, that's, that's good for them, that's good, and thank you, Miss Shaglin, for what you're doing.
And I would say, even if you don't want to be, again, it goes back to, you might, I would rather, and I'm sure the students' parents would rather, like, I would rather you realize that you don't like blood or looking at something like this here versus going to school and then you're, oh, I'm going to be a nurse, or I'm going to do something, and it's like, but wait a second, I don't like anatomy and I don't like that type of situation. So now's a good time to also make those explorations, or we have students that are in culinary, and two weeks ago, they were doing the chicken butchery lab, and that literally is like butchering a whole chicken, and they're like, well, I don't like chicken, I don't want to touch chicken, I don't want, it's like, it's culinary. So making some of those, you know, making some of those realizations now versus in the future is what this is all about, too, so.
Well, I think that teacher cadet, even if you don't want to be, that, I think the confidence that it can give you from having to work with kids and stand up in front of them and do things, I think that...
They have hesitations in speaking.
Absolutely, I think there's that part of it, too, yeah. I think that's in all of our CTE programs. It gives skills that aren't necessarily... Oh, yeah. Skills, you know, of the EMT or whatever. There's a lot of other skills that it provides our students, yeah.
Jeff, did you want to say anything? I know you're here. We started this partnership about 80 years ago.
I came here after COVID. We were, you know, I don't want, I can admit this to you now, but we were broken. Our staff was broken, our ranks were broken, we didn't have people looking like they wanted to be given their profession. Today, I can tell you with confidence that I only have a position open at EMS right now. Part of that's because of what we're doing here, part of it's because of the kids who are interested, so I just, seriously, I can't thank you enough. You know, we talk about students getting experience. I had to stop down at our station nearby New Haven, which was a month or so ago, and the students were just starting to arrive. And as I left the station, it was headed somewhere else, and there was one of the students there, and I don't remember which student she was, but they had cardiac arrest in prison, and could be served in a correctional facility. And the prison's different than the jail, it's a very nice place, and people are very nice people, and it's very overwhelming, just the sensation of the era. But I thought, kind of unfortunately, fortunately, what an education she was about to get. The patient also turned out to be in cardiac arrest, so there's a lot of network care that needs to be done, but those are the kind of experiences we can offer, and we've actually watched them throughout the year, they kind of start as, as kids with us, as children, and by the time you see them at this point in the year, they're really becoming young adults, and a lot of that, I think, is because of what they're exposed to. So thank you all very much, that's really all I had to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for celebrating CTE month with us, and if you ever have any questions, one thing, and I said it to Joe for the student announcement, but March 18th is our regional CTE advisory board meetings, that's held at the MISD, and so basically, all of the CTE teachers from around the county, we come together, everyone brings one or two business partners, and so really, that gives the students, or the students, gives the teachers an opportunity to really hear about the programs from around the county. So if you're ever interested in getting involved, whether it be what your profession is, or if you're just interested in seeing from the eyes of, you know, a board member or a parent, or, like I said, what you do, I definitely can get you invited, get you a seat around the table, and at least just really get to see what the teachers are doing outside of the classroom, in addition to what they do inside the classroom. So that's March 18th, if anyone is interested. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hey, next item on our agenda is our unpaid leave of absent request.
Before you tonight is a request for an unpaid leave of absence. It's a communication that I sent ahead of time, just trying to, because this is a very short timeframe, we've got the request. It is in the RA contract. There are two parts of a staff number for requests for unpaid leave. One is prior to the pregnancy, one is after the pregnancy. Ms. Sealek is here, the request for unpaid leave, I'll turn it over to you.
Hi, everyone. Angelina, I'm presenting this evening to formally request unpaid time from my classroom to care for my newborn, who just exited the room. I'm asking for time for the remainder of the semester. So after speaking with Mr. Waltsley, he kind of let me know the two articles specifically within Article 12, Section 4 and Section 5. So I had to wish I would have been a little bit more in detail prior to my maternity leave, because I kind of would have believed I would be here for tonight. So she was born prematurely, and because of that, I had to leave very quickly. So I did not get time to sit down with Angel, like I wished to, and kind of look at the leave, so kind of in detail. So it's the first time, ma'am, I want to prioritize my postpartum mental health and physical health. So the extension of my leave unpaid would give me the opportunity to care for myself. Currently, I'm going through imaging for my legs to kind of see what the pain and the problems are that I'm having. It was an unplanned C-section, and she was due one month and four days early. So to my surprise, after I dismissed my students on November 18th, I went abroad. So that was not planned. I thought I had about a month more time, and December 20th was my due date. I thought I had about a month more time, four to five weeks to plan with Mrs. Good and you have some time to transition her into my room. And be honest to me, she came early. So Mrs. Murphy helped this out for a couple of days, and then Mrs. Good took over right away. Once I was admitted into the hospital for labor, she was born premature, and we stayed for four days because she had jaundice. After those four days, we were discharged, sent home. I was readmitted within the next 24 hours with preeclampsia. We stayed for another three days. So during that time, I was emailing Jamie as much as I could to kind of update him on where I am and what I'm doing and who he is. on where I am and what I'm doing and who needs to take care of my room and where things are at. During that, my time so far with postpartum care, I've sought out counseling, I've worked on my own mental health and my own physical health, but I've also cared for my child. I'm a Valley member of Virginia Community Schools. I've been nominated and selected for Teacher of the Year. That was my third year here, this is my seventh now. I've had the pleasure of planning and reading with lots of you during March's reading month and I have stayed current in planning in my classroom. I'm committed to continuing open communication with the staff and students in my classroom and their families as well. If possible, I would love to continue and hopefully volunteer with March of Reading Month as kind of an out of building person. Right now, I'm currently working with Mr. Pedry to finish plans for our fun month. And lots of you are going to plan, hoping to come read. I know Miss Taltos got in my room before. So it is just that time that I'm asking for to continue care for her for the remainder of this semester and then return after. So thank you for your consideration and making extra time for me to do this, and I appreciate you. If you have any questions, look, I may be the answer.
Question? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We aren't going to vote this evening.
We're going to discuss it at that point, yes. So do you want her to stay or if she wants to stay, or I know Mr. Walmsley can get a hold of her afterwards.
I had let her know that I would, either way, I'm going to let her know tomorrow morning first thing. So you're welcome to stay or you can, you can go and I'll let you know when I get the little one here. Okay?
Okay, next item on our agenda is our consideration of M A S B Board of Directors. I know everybody has received everything. We need to pick one person. Anybody want to start the conversation on this? Who had a choice that they would like?
I watched the videos that Craig had sent over. I didn't get that email, but it sounds appreciated when he forwarded that email. But my personal choice, looking at the four of them, was, I can't remember the name now as I'm sitting here, but the first woman from Panay. I really liked what she had to say.
Dr. Hammond.
Yeah, I know the first one started with an A.
Yeah. I mean, she's a man.
I really liked Portia Doctor and the, her having been on the board and having all the classes, M A S B classes and things. Couple of the others kind of just rubbed me the wrong way the second they started talking. But I really liked Michelle.
Do you have any thoughts or any thoughts?
So I, I also, I had, you know, all of them actually were really, they well approved with the M A S B, which was good to see. So in terms of credentials, they all passed for that. The one person that stood out to me was Paul Colen. He was the one that actually sent us an email first to. A couple of things that some of the interviews, they had mentioned, they had talked about their own school board a lot, almost as if they were trying to bring their school board into, bring, it wasn't for everybody, the whole region. Where Paul, in his speech, kind of talked about bringing everyone and being committed to the whole region, not just his own board that he sits on, which I felt that that was very important compared to what some of the others just kept boasting about their own board, not talking about how the new position is encompassing multiple boards. So.
I will agree with Candace on her choice. That's who I had picked out. I do know the person personally, so maybe that makes a little difference. He's very well spoken. And I, I think the big thing that Candace just said was the same for me, is that he talked about the whole region. Some of the people didn't talk about, you know, we have different groups and different families and different types from Richmond all the way down to Fitzgerald, all the way out to Oakland, Detroit, whatever. So I, that was my pick when I looked through everything.
My first pick was Ursula Rogers. She was the only one that actually mentioned in her, like, election statement, anything about mental health. And that's just, I've always been a bit vague about all that. She seems pretty strong on that and that's why, yes, she's, I graded them with stars and that's why she's got five stars for me. But that, and she also does talk about the whole, all of Michigan schools in her last paragraph there that she's, and I also, I underlined her statement in regards to having equal funding across the board, so that's important to me as well. So she's my number one pick, although I did, I did give, I think, two or three stars to the, Colen, is that his last name? But she's like, she's my number one pick.
Well, funny, but she's my number one pick.
Are you kidding me?
No, that's what I thought when you said it. But I, I lean towards, I had three. Ursula was number one, Roderick Means and Jack Tomsey. And I, the reason she was number one is she added the mental health part. But each one of my top three talked about inadequate funding and what we have to do to better fund all the districts. And yet, the way things are going with public education, we need as many advocates for applicable funding if we want to see public education survive. So that's, that's the direction.
What, who, I'm sorry, which, I, you said you had Ursula. Ursula was my number one and Roderick Means is my number two. I can even show, I can show it to you if you guys saw, looking at it right.
I have two stars.
Yes, yes, stars.
There's not a chap. I'm here.
I don't have, uh. Eaton, Eaton, Resa.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, who? Yep, he was. Yeah, I don't, I don't have any for him actually. Yeah. He's had no stars.
Well, I read through it. It was, like Candace said, they all have great.
Sure.
Background, experience, they all seem like they can do an excellent job. I'm always for mental health, so, you know, Ursula, that, that did stick out to me as well. But I also liked what Paul had in his bio. I think I was leaning more toward Paul, but I did like both of those.
Okay, so we're kind of tied a little bit here between Paul and Ursula.
So to kind of comment on that, I had seen Ursula, that's why I was just thinking.
Yeah, some of them didn't do the video.
Yeah.
And some were in the book.
Right.
Obviously. Yeah, all on the board.
Correct. So I will say, re, skimming through, looking at standing scene, I would lean towards Ursula. I, ironically, Paul's video, when I was watching, like, within the first two sentences, I told my husband, I was like, oh, absolutely not, like, I can't do this. And so that was just like one of my first thoughts when going through this stuff. So I, if there were between the two, I would lean towards Ursula.
Okay. I find that, I don't have a mission.
I like the votes.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'm either one for me and we have more people for Ursula, so if we're good.
Then we're voting on it later, right?
We're going to vote on it later. For Mr. Walmsley to submit, yeah. Okay, any other questions or anything on that? Thank you. Next item on our agenda is our 2025 budget amendments.
So while Tammy's pulling that up and enlarging, just a couple of things. This budget does improve our situation from the budget that was approved in June. There are still some unanswered questions that we can't definitively say at this point. Surprisingly, it's almost March first of the school year. Just the legislative change to the hard cap and retirement. We've gotten information all over the board. So what the budget you have here is, given what our ISD recommendations and so forth, trying our best guess, but it could change overnight and so forth. So I will turn it over to Tammy.
Thank you. Good evening. When you approved the budgets back in June of twenty-four, for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, we made assumptions, lots and lots of assumptions. And we didn't know what our foundation would be, the state budget hadn't been approved. We didn't know the number of students or what rate revenues would be available to us. As it turns out, know our retirement rate, and we didn't know our original staffing and other things we didn't know. The picture has become much clearer now, so in this amendment, we will change the assumed foundation revenue, which was, we assume the House proposal at nine thousand eight twenty-five per student, because we know now that two hundred and seventeen dollar increase did not happen, and we remain at the two thousand and nine, nine thousand, sorry, nine thousand six hundred eight per student. We estimated one thousand five hundred and thirty-nine students. We have about eighteen more students now at one thousand five fifty-seven. We amended all of our grants, which we now know what was available for state grants and federal grants. We still have a couple of grants out there from the state. Our robotics grant is still not in this amendment. And then we've been hearing about the healthcare reimbursement grant from the state for money that our staff pays, we are to reimburse them. So that also is a new grant that we have not put in this amendment, but it will be in the final. We also didn't know our salaries and who our staff would be. We now have updated the budget to include our current staffing at their current salaries and their benefits. Our U A A L rate, our retirement rate is, is the big benefit. Our U A A L rate, we assume would be seventeen point four two percent. It did not remain in that. It dropped six point four four percent, ten point five eight percent. So that was what I believe the intent was, not giving us a foundation increase, saving us on the retirement expenditure side. So that is also reflected in this amendment. In the original amendment, we had eliminated the instructional coaching positions and this amendment, those two positions are back. And I'm here to tell you what this does to our bottom line. So on the screen, we put in our comparative budget. It shows our actual from twenty-three, twenty-four, just as information to you, those are the audited numbers. And then we have a column in the middle for the twenty-four, twenty-five original budget and a column toward the right side of the First Amendment, proposed amendment that we're bringing to you tonight. And then there's a yellow column that shows, shows changes, increases are positive, decreases are negative. So if you look at our revenues, as I mentioned, local revenues went up about thirty-five thousand. That's not a big increase. A lot of that is our tax revenue, these are concluded in our local revenues. In our state revenues, a big change there is our foundation. We also received some more mixers offset revenues, which is what they call them forty-seven. And they're different, there's a number of them on our state aid report. Those are now reflected, that brought us an increase of one hundred and eighty-four thousand in state revenues. Federal revenues stayed about the same, so we've adjusted that. You'll see an increase of one hundred and ninety thousand in our inter-district revenue sources. That's money that we get from our home ISD. In our original budget, we were not planning to get a special ed millage allocation of targeting that and then increasing our inter-district sources by one hundred and ninety thousand. And then our food service, we do a modification transfer of indirect cost from our food service fund to our general fund, because the general fund pays all utilities, pays for my salary, pays for payroll benefits, Ryan, anything that related to food service, but we can't charge to food service, we do through this indirect cost trade. And we originally estimated that forty-four thousand, we've increased it to be more of what it was last year, around sixty thousand. So it increases our total revenues from twenty-two million four fifty-six to twenty-two million eight sixty-four, which is an increase of about four hundred thousand.
I just want to say, um, the scientific principle of reaction, the opposite reaction of the rich. The one we need to look at is at federal. Depending on what happens at the federal, if we were to lose federal dollars, that's six hundred and twenty thousand, what is that? Tammy's going to go over kind of some of the things that fails for, but that's your Title I, eras, and your Title I teachers, it's got special ed staffing in there. That's on the radar right now, given what's been going on in the federal level. We're always looking at the state level, because as you can see, the majority of our funds come in at the state level or over the level. But that's a significant amount of money.
And as we scroll down, get to our, start our expenditure report. So it starts with elementary. You can see our salaries went up slightly, health benefits declined, the biggest decrease was in retirement. And then we had other modifications. The supply increase is a state grant, thirty-five J, which is hanging around, we started last year, we can see half this year, we're getting the other half. So when you see that twenty-nine thousand dollar increase in supplies, it's additional textbooks being funded by the thirty-five J grant. We go down to middle school, you see similar numbers. Health benefits decreased, our retirement benefits decreased. We also had an increase in our supplies through the thirty-five J textbooks that we were purchasing. And then high school, there's an increase in high school salaries and benefits, that's reflecting our actual staffing now, and then there's savings in the retirement rate. Then our sort of high school, high school increased to stay about one hundred and seventy-eight percent.
Between those three function codes, that's a good chunk of our dollars from the instructional end. The thing that we're watching right now is that legislation, that the previous legislation did not send over to the governor to sign. If you recall in lame duck, there was a hard cap legislation that was passed, and the current House has not sent it to the governor, they've been holding off. There's legal battles that are going on. If that goes over, that healthcare cost could go up for our part of the possible. More likely it will go up for our part of the cost.
That's one of the basic things in that, I believe, is a seven percent increase in the cap, which is what we pay, what we have budgeted is pretty much at the cap. Let me get to preschool. As you remember, our GSRP numbers were down, so we decreased some of our staffing at the GSRP level, and that is reflected in the preschool expenditures. You can see an increase in our summer school costs, and that, again, is a grant, that's a twenty-three J grant that's getting finished up this year, so we have to spend it by September thirtieth, twenty-five. So that is allowing us to do some preschool, sorry, some summer school this year. Get to special education, again, reflecting our actual staffing and actual salaries. Special ed includes IDA, federal funding. IDA is still budgeted at the higher retirement rate, so that will be adjusted in the final amendment. But whatever is in the system right now for that grant is what we have to budget. Until that changes, we have to budget. It will change by the end of the year for the June amendment. Let me get to the, what I call function one twenty-five, that it needs, it's really your Title I and at risk, a lot of your, whoops, a lot of your expenditures are in that, those numbers. And again, the thirty-one A and title grants, and that's your, those dollar notes are your five, the one grants.
Anything on the supplies thirteen? The one, the supplies under the Title I?
Thirty-one A. We don't have any title.
There's also, title is only a staff person and what we have to get to the brokels. It's an automobile. The supplies, it's also under thirty-one A.
Some books.
Some books, yeah, for the intervention classes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The title of, over the years, has been reduced to reduce, it is literally just a person. It's not even a whole person anymore. It's a portion of a person, part of a person, and we use pay thirty-one A out of the other. They used to provide some aids and all that has been moved out of title, that's now.
In the grant? It's in the right government?
The aids that we have, and currently have three of them, they are part of thirty-one A grant, where they used to be part of the federal, but they, we don't have funds to support it.
Thank you.
I mean, I think you might be looking at the sixty-five thousand dollar increase.
Yeah, I was.
For services. And I'm trying to remember what that might be, not the thirty-one A, that would have title.
Is that the summer ed annuity?
No, that would be in summer school.
Oh, purchases services, right. Okay.
I will get back to you later.
Yeah, okay, I'm just curious, because that one jumped up.
Yeah. Yeah, I can see why it did. And I'm sorry, I don't recall that.
It might be the, not the summer school credit recovery, but the, like, the during the year part, the new day, fourth day, and that one got off.
It might be the 31A.
So like, those students who are earning credit, credit recovery?
Yeah, the credit recovery.
That would be a big chunk of that.
Okay.
And then we get to vocational education. Again, our staffing, salaries, benefits. We'll see a decrease in capital away. Last year, we purchased computers for the computer programming class. This year, we're purchasing computers for the TV and broadcasting class. And then we're reallocating some of that to that new position that Amber you mentioned, which we'll see later in the budget. So under instructional expenditures, our total goes from $12,568 to $12,611, which is an increase of about $40,000. We get to guidance services. And this reflected a shift in our 31A, whatever 31A means, a health grant and counseling. But we are staffing still one counselor at middle school, one counselor at high school. Next line is health services. And when you see that purchase service number, that's our 97J grant dollars. 97Js of early students, the K-10 intervention grant that we're receiving. Again, that's money we actually received last year and are spending this year. So it's, well, they're on the expenditure this year. So that's part of that health services that we're doing. No real change in speech services. Again, this is reflecting our current staffing. Same with social worker. Social worker also is impacted by our 31A and 31A A-3 travelers. And 31As that, 31As are at risk, 31As is the ones who help. Funds some of our social workers.
Hey Tammy, you have a question?
Yes.
That's speech and audiology. Does that include what we had approved last with the contracted services? Or is that included in that? Because I know that was an additional expense.
It does not include that contracted service. That would be something that's done again.
But that individual doesn't, isn't getting paid our current employee, because they don't, they don't have a time. So it's going to be shifting from the payroll side to the contracted services.
Gotcha.
It's moving it from one category to the other.
Yeah, okay.
So we do not make that change up here. We'll make that a different.
But I want to make sure, if, if the person stays out for as long as they plan to, and we are contracting, there is additional cost in the net. It's going to cost us a little more than if the person was just here. But that, that's the plan, is to move it to the solid kind.
Teacher consultants is also a shift in our staffing, where we had a little more TC than we were before. Other people services is our schedule fees. That includes all the extracurricular academic side, plus your stage, plus your robotics grants. There's no big change there at this point. Improvement in instruction is where you'll see the things change. And that is where we do not budget to have two instructional coaches in the original budget, but we are budgeting for that. We see that reflected in this.
And part of their salary is paid out of grant dollars. It's not 100% out of general fund, not right now.
But they both get recorded on the section under the function of your budget. And we get to library. Not a lot of change there at this point. Same with technology, we're basically adjusting for current staffing. And we get to supervision of instructional staff. And that is really your special ed director and building's position as the curriculum director. And again, we're just adjusting for actual paying benefits. Then we get to board of academic assessment, didn't have changed much. Board of education expenditures have not been amended at this point. Superintendent, again, we're changing, modifying the budget for just actual staffing costs. Same with office of the principal. Again, throughout this, you should notice the retirement benefits line is related to when all these sections, even if the salary went up most of the time, the retirement rate didn't, didn't go up proportionally.
Just a reminder, on some of these areas, the support staff appropriate to that are also built in, like, the office of the principal. The secretaries are also built into there. Under my office, C D's built into there. The secretary, they're split, at Marge and Krista are split between athletics and throughout the budget.
Get to the business office. Again, no major changes there. No major changes with the other business services. I can go back up to that. See, no real changes there. Operations and maintenance. Again, we're adjusting for our current staffing. And the same with the security services. A big chunk of that security services are our bus driver security monitors that are funded by 31A A-Grants. So there's an increase there, but that's just to reflect the actual staffing that we have. We get to people transportation. Again, we're reflecting our actual staffing costs. And support services in the middle section there, we see an increase of $20,300. That is that CTE 61A grant funded position that Amber you talked about, where they're doing a lot of the data entry and data monitoring for the CTE programs. No real changes under communications, just a slight decrease. No real changes under support services, staff personnel. That is our HR position and the cost associated with it. No real changes under support services in there. For people accounting, that's again the board position and adjustments to reflect the actual cost. Athletics activities, we have not changed a whole lot. We're still budgeting the same salaries for coaches. We have our secretary, cap type secretary and athletic director there. The one area that we may have to increase is under purchase services. Not sure where that's going at this point. That's where we pay for our athletic officials. And there's a cost increase in the flooding officials, so that will be reflected in the budget as well. And we get down to people accounting, which our asset support services cover. There's total support services, which is everything that's not instructional so far. Went from $9,480,000 to $9,603,000, which, again, was letting increases our instructional coaches, which may be here and there. Questions, Amber? I'll go to you.
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, I know on the front page, we were talking about federal funding, including the parents and the teachers. So I see where the Title I in page four, is that what we're looking at is affecting part of the 620?
Yeah, I'm, yes.
Trying to check, like, what areas would we take from that?
That, that will include those parent pros that work in the 31A program that used to be funded by Title I and now funded by 31A. That also includes the teacher, the Title I teacher, that would be funded partially with Title I and 31A.
You're going to see some of that federal, in the group above it, in special ed, they got ECSE programs, they're funded through the Title Grant. Your Title I, you're going to see it at the end when we do, for our prokl schools, their allocations are in here. So it's, that's where the bulk of it is, but it is spread, it's sprinkled throughout under the function codes.
And special education is where the federal funding is going to be.
It's the, it's the biggest. That's the IDEA program, and that's our biggest federal fund. Yes, and that's under special ed, that funds special ed teachers.
And I believe that was.
We have specialized parents too, but they're funded by, funded by the general fund.
I'll be on the number three. I believe that when it was originally put in place, it was supposed to be funding at at least 17%. And they're only funding it at 7%. So they're not even at the target when it was originally put in place. So it's a significant difference, so. And we know educating a student, especially, and it costs, but there's more resources, there's more support services. Yeah, true.
Yes, IDEA actually funds about three of our teachers under the special education. Any other questions? Moving right along. Get to our community education grants. That's where we have to put our homeless. That's where we have, we have an activity night, where our staff comes in to work, the working parents and students on activity night. For, it can be for section 41, which is our global education, and your special ed, it can be preschool. But that all goes under that, that section, community education. And then we get to custody and care of children, which is our childcare program. And then we're adjusting paying benefits for the staffing amount that we have. Well, for activities, the biggest chunk of that is funded by Title I for our homeless students. Then we have our non-public school section, and this is all funded by the grades. The largest one being actually the IDEA proportion of share, and some Title as well. And we're just adjusting those numbers to, for staffing. And we have dedicated to that in the grant funding we have available. And then the last part, the outgoing transfers, we are, we are still transferring. We're playing them out of $589,900 for the non-bond cap projects, which includes savings for busings, savings for the truck replacement, artificial turf replacement, savings for computers, also on the same.
Servers, laptops, stuff we've been putting aside a little every year, so that when we're ready to, the funds are there.
So brings our bottom line to improvement of about $150,000 improvement. $153,809 is our improvement. We go from total expenditures of $22,855 to $23,109. An increase of $254,000. And then our revenues exceed, our expenditures exceed our revenues. Originally, it was $399,000. We've decreased that to $245,000. So reducing that use of fund balance by $150,000. And then you can see we have the beginning fund equity. We have our projected fund equity. We're at $3.8 million at the moment. With this amendment, we predict to be at just under $3.6 million at the end of the fiscal cap, which is about 15.6% of our revenues. We can do unrestricted revenues to get to that, what they used to call the restricted test, and then the test, 21.6%. Some things that we still have unknown is our agility, depending on how long these days hold and how quickly it's hot to turn on your ignition. Snow plowing is another one that you'll be watching. Actually, salting is our bigger cost than the actual removal of the snow. So we'll be watching snow plowing and salting. Insurance cap legislation that Ryan mentioned. Any building repairs that pop up? We learned last year that anything is possible. And middle school didn't have a little issue, so hopefully that won't be reviewed. And then, as I mentioned, we have a lot of renovations. Any mistakes, Amber?
No, first of all, the operation one, I'm really, I just can't remember the contract we, we approved for the salting and plowing was significantly more than what we've paid in the past. And then you couple that up, we've had more plowing and salting this year than we did at all last year. So we are watching that one as, that's, that's the same thing with the heating and cooling. On the days when we aren't in session, we try to power down the buildings to save on the energy, which does help, but those are things we're watching. And at this point, you know, when I look at that, that number, and I know we've always tried to, at least tried our targets of zero, I am not concerned at this point, because I know there are still things that are going to, are going to roll off, I believe, at the end, when all the dust settles. But the ones that I'm watching, the hard cap legislation, that, that could be a 7% increase in our costs, just like that. Especially if they run through them. Again, it was supposed to start at least January 1, when the bill came over, but it never has moved over, so we'll see.
We'll see. I feel that's a good sticky point. This is where we're at for now, and we're not in a bad spot for now.
Do you have any idea, Brian, how they're facing, what they think on an outlandish or on the hard cap?
No, no. You're quiet.
Which is scary. This is, this will be, we'll vote on this in two weeks. And at the beginning, this First Amendment, you said something about some things that aren't there. Will it be a Second Amendment coming, or will we do that at the end of the year?
Right now, unless there's something significant that changes the plan at the beginning, the money that Tammy mentioned about the 3%.
Yes.
It's really a cost neutral, it should be a cost neutral. They're giving us money to reimburse what we are paying out. So there's going to be a revenue, and then it will be a decline of expense, so it should be zeroed out. I don't anticipate, unless they do some special supplemental education bill, which I don't anticipate our revenues significantly changing, other than the one that Tammy mentioned, which is about $159,000. We are, just so the board knows, this, we started reimbursing employees July 1. We just got the money now. So that's why the importance of having a fund balance is, because then you can pull from that instead of having to borrow money. But we are watching to make sure the money they allocated is enough to cover everybody, because our rough calculation, what was that, last Thursday or Friday, Thursday with Angela? We're meeting together at the end of April, because I think May, based on their current allocation, we should run out, which would mean we no longer reimburse employees until October 1 next year, when the law actually goes into effect.
When we don't have to pay it.
Well, we don't have to pay it, it's just going to be taken out if that doesn't go into permanent effect, so. I don't know how they're going to handle that, but we are, we're watching it closely so that we are.
There's been little rumors that, oh, they're going to adjust it and make everybody whole, so everybody gets the full reimbursement. But again, those are rumors, and we don't know where the actual numbers are going to fall. It's a budget, that's what we, we guess.
I, I wouldn't anticipate anything from the federal government approving anything on that end. If that money does go, when we start that budget conversation, we need to, we need to be prepared on how we respond. Because a lot of support services are paid out of those grants that we no longer. We wouldn't have unless we're going to choose to allocate money in another way. Which is just squeezing the money. In your packet, you have the actual ASN copy, if you want to look through each account number and see the difference in June, it's there, so. If you get bored, you can't sleep.
Very entertaining, yes. Very entertaining. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Okay, next item on our agenda is our Blue Double Raves. Let's start off with Candace. Okay. Margaret?
Yeah. I went to the cheer districts a couple of weeks ago that we hosted here. And if you've never been, everybody that participates gets a section and it's cordoned off, if you will, for fans and all of that. So the schools were there. One of the schools was Cliftondale High School. And they only had four cheerleaders to compete, and they had zero fans. And when, when the teens get announced to come out, you know, everybody's fans go crazy and stand up and cheer. When it came time for Cliftondale, our girls lined up, when they came out from the gym, they lined up for them and cheered and went crazy for these four girls that had nobody cheering for them. So it, it, it got my heart and just raves to our girls and to the coaches. We were a real class act. And the Cliftondale girls were just so supportive of everybody. They were cheering everybody on, and they did really good the first two rounds. They weren't able to compete in the third round, because they didn't have enough girls to compete, but just, just a great job, just a real class act. And I was very proud to be from Richmond that morning. Or afternoon, I guess it was.
Thank you. Danielle?
Yeah, I guess I have two. I just wanted to say thank you to the special ed department at the elementary. Mrs. Gerchey has been doing a lot, leading up to these conferences and things. And she individually reached out to every single parent on her caseload to arrange and coordinate conferences with their classroom. conferences with their classroom teacher, as well as herself. So that's the first time I've seen that in the three years that Jackson's been part of the program, so that was really awesome. And she's new to us this year, so that was really nice to see. And then also to Mrs. Pinsky in the office for not only just dealing with everybody in general, but she does an amazing job of contacting us, even though she, you know, it's the littlest things, but I appreciated her phone call this morning, just to keep me updated. And I know that she's, it's, I know that I have peace of mind of Jackson being here, because she will give me a call and let me know, because she knows I keep, we have to keep tele, teleis medically for some of these things, and she will make it a point, and she always remembers to call me and let me know if those occurrences happen, so I have been very appreciative of, you know, her support of all of our little kiddos at the elementary this year.
Thank you. Austin?
Nope, I don't have anything tonight.
Sarah?
Just that I also attended districts, and then I also attended regionals at Heartland last weekend for cheer, and our girls, I mean, they're just doing so great. So just the all the growth and everything that they've put into this season, I think is great, the coaches are amazing, I think we're very lucky to have all the whole cheer coaching staff, and we're going states, so that is exciting, so we'll be going to states this weekend.
Thank you.
I just want to rave about our CTE programs, actually, Mrs. Zabel, for putting them out on Facebook. I don't know if anybody follows the district Facebook, but, and she knows because I sent her, I sent her, and it's, it just looks really professional, looks very nice, it's special, it gives us a student, tells what program they're in, and what they're doing, and I just, I just thought it looked very professional looking, and very nice, and acknowledges our students, so thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda is our student rep. Joe, what's up?
All right, hey guys, let's get started with the elementary school first, give you guys some updates. The preschool winter formal was recently, a success, where we had a lot of ice cream, cookies, grape treats, face painting, you know, a lot of dancing, just an all-around fun event, where every student had then left with a book, got a chance to enjoy some nice sugary food, great time, really awesome.
And then send them home.
Yes, of course. February kindness month is coming to an end, and we'd like to share how wonderful it was as the students were learning many different ways to express forms of kindness, whether that be making a new friend, opening a door for somebody, just being that person in someone else's corner. It's a really important thing as people to share and spread this level of positivity, and it's always great to see that within our schools. After February kindness month, we, is March is Reading Month, which we are also super excited about. Our first ever March is Reading Month assembly will be hosted soon, and where we will have around, most of the entire elementary school student body, around six hundred kids, to celebrate literacy. We are excited to have had many visitors in the schools, such as Representative Jamie Green, Richmond Board of Education members, Superintendent Wamsley, community members, Ms. Richmond Court, and many other people to come and read to our students, which is really awesome. Going on at the middle school, not...
Joe, can you interrupt real quick?
Yeah, of course.
Did they have a date for that all-school assembly yet, for the reading?
For the, the March is Reading Month kickoff assembly?
Yes.
I was not provided a date, Mr. Wamsley, do you might, do you have it on you right now?
I don't know.
Okay. Maybe we can get that for you as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you very much.
Middle school, we've got some great stuff going on as well. Friday's PTO annual dodgeball tournament went on, it was really, really interesting, I heard the kids had a blast, had a great time, I mean, you know, who doesn't love dodgeball, right? Our teachers are getting ready for parent-teacher conferences, which will be held on March fifth and sixth. And congratulations to Ava N. Slidwright, our RMS spelling bee champion, and Cole Halas, our RMS geography bee winner. We are incredibly proud of both of our students. It's just really awesome to see that type of stuff, that's, it's hard, I mean, come on. It's not that many of us really, especially spelling, I was not very good at that in middle school, but congratulations to them. Moving on to the high school, our eleventh, or ninth through eleventh grade course of carousel took place on Thursday, February twentieth, where we had over eighteen groups and classes being advocated for, ranging from different CTE programs, all the way to our performing arts programs, as well as core content electives like American Wars and forensics, just to increase the advocacy for their student enrollment. Our eighth grade orientation and course of carousel will be, take, will take place during Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, where students will be receiving scheduled presentation, a tour of the building led by student ambassadors, and participating in carousel courses, just as the ninth and eleventh graders did, to kind of get a feel for what classes we have here at RHS, and give them some ideas on what they may want to take when they eventually enter high school. They will also be eating lunch at the high school, which, you know, can't go wrong with that, just get a feel for the environment. I mean, you get rid of recess when you grow up, I probably, I found that, to be honest. Moving on to after-school activities, one big one is, we've got a lot of music stuff coming around for March, but this week, Thursday, we have choir pre-festival, and I would like to make note of that, good luck to all of them, it will be hosted here at the high school auditorium, and I just wanted to give you guys a heads up, because there will be many different, like choir festival, band festival, all those great stuff, which, those will come at a later date. In terms of athletics, we have three teams and sports here at the high school going to states. Congratulations to all of them. First, we'll start with, as mentioned previously, our varsity cheer team, who placed fourth at regionals, and will be competing all the way at CMU on Saturday. Their start time is eleven AM. It's quite dry, I gotta say, especially if you start that early. Claire Hillbrand, congratulations to her, she qualified for a girl's single states finals in bowling, where she placed sixth at her regional on Saturday, and will be bowling at Jack Sixty, starting at nine AM on Saturday. Moving on to wrestling, Jacob Fink, Jack Akins, Aiden Burgeon, and Polly Chapman will represent RHS at the individual wrestling state finals on Friday and Saturday at Ford Field. Good luck to the JV powerlifters competing this weekend at Flint Towers Catholic. The girls, or middle school basketball boys are wrapping up their season this week with games at home against Algenac and Wednesday on Friday at Armada. The girls' basketball teams hosted Almont for senior night Friday, and scored a big win against the Raiders, congratulations to them. And boys' basketball begins their district tournaments tonight in Marysville against Algenac at seven. If they win, they will then play Armada at seven on Wednesday in Marysville. With all that said and done, oh, actually, no, there's a couple more I skipped over, don't want to forget anybody. Girls' basketball will also host districts at the RHS next week, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And then finally, there will be an informational meeting for all parents and student athletes interested in participating in spring sports tomorrow at six o'clock in the auditorium. As I mentioned previously, something new that I would like to kind of have me and Elizabeth start to regularly adapt in our presentation, sort of like an items of interest for the students, I had previously presented some questions to Mr. Wamsley, that I'm sure most of you guys have already seen, that I, me and Elizabeth both have been somewhat contacted by the student body as a request for clarification on questions they necessarily couldn't get straight answers for, which is no problem at all, we're just kind of looking to advocate for, you know, maybe the right process, or just clear up some understandings. The first one, if it is okay with you, Mr. Wamsley, we'd like to ask is about pizza, Little Caesar's being the only branded food on Thursday, are there any opportunities to maybe expand that to different businesses, and if so, why not? And no complaints, of course, just curious.
As I mentioned earlier, it has to do with the nutritional standards that we have to have within the week of the food service. Pizza's a hot commodity, I'm intended, with our students, it's a high-volume day, it's well-liked, and so we don't have currently any other groups like Taco Bell or Burger, because I don't know if they meet the nutritional standard. However, we have a lot of products and vendors, links to Tysons, to, we've had a meeting with Leaks Meat Market this recently, just trying to get more fresh foods and lots of preservative foods into the meal, so, over the course.
And we also have to bid out anything that we offer in our food service program, so we invite other vendors to bid on pizza, Little Caesar's is the only one that bids. We, all pizza shops in the area, in Richmond and in the area, Little Caesar's are not down one, that's, that's good to us.
Interesting.
It's a big commitment to supply all of those pizzas, so, and then we're grateful that they're willing to do that for us.
Okay, yeah, that, that's, yeah, totally, I understand. The next thing is necessary, isn't a huge issue, just kind of curiosity of students, do we have fake detectors implemented in our bathrooms all around the high school, maybe even the middle school, and if so, do they work?
We currently do not have fake detectors, this is one that we have been piloting and trying out, but it is, gets a lot of false positives. When you have false positives, it, we do, it reallocates resources many times with the day that it is over, so.
Like perfume and deodorants?
Yes.
I understand.
So we have tried them out, we've used them, but they have not been a consistent, a good consistency in terms of a positive, false positive.
Other things, other units out there?
We've tried some other units, this is the latest one that we use.
Interesting. Is there like a specific brand of, like, that makes fake detectors, is there someone we're in contact with, or is this just like kind of something you...
No, there's several companies that our IT department have worked with.
Interesting.
Because part of the connection is, everyone, power sources, IT connection, where is it being reported to, how are we getting that notification, we're trying to tie it into our current systems.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, and the last question I just wanted to ask you today was if it was possible to have student parking lot cameras provided to prevent damaged vehicles going unnoticed, and recognize those who may have caused the damaged vehicles?
So, I'm not aware, and I asked the administrative team, and they asked their secretaries, and I asked Mr. Ryan, have we reported anything, we haven't any insurance plans filed, so I'm not aware, this is the problem. However, we do have two cameras that cover the middle school, or the high school student parking lots, and we'll see the images. The challenge is, is, yes, we can add more, the current camera system has to be a Wi-Fi camera, because running the camera from the top of the pole, or on the light pole, down the pole, in the underground, tubing back to the, to the server, the connection, all the network, it's too far around. So you'd have to use a Wi-Fi camera from the pole to a receiver, which is what we do at the football field, there's Wi-Fi in the stadium, because we shoot a Wi-Fi receiver from the high side of the high school over there. But we're not aware that this is a problem, but it doesn't mean that we can't for future development.
I don't know that we, I don't know that you wouldn't be notified of a claim, because they wouldn't make a claim with us, that we'd be dealing with their own insurance carrier...
We have that conversation with many parents, I think, we start the search, but they call the school, because the school would be, it's more of a...
Yeah, that's how it goes.
Yeah, yes.
Kind of like a call to you, doesn't it?
Yeah, really.
Not that we get a whole lot, but we do, we do get a call, and oftentimes, we release stuff to satellite, satellite or insurance, but they deal with it directly, but...
I suppose so, yeah, right, okay, gotcha. So I would suppose also too, my advice would be if this is like an issue, they have a lot of really affordable dash cans now, that catch a lot of good information.
No, that, that's definitely, it was just, because some students had come back to me and said that they were informed that they didn't exist, and I didn't exactly see that as being very realistic, and I thought I would just ask for something like that. They do exist, there are, how many of them do we have?
There's one on the side of the, front of the high school that focuses out into the parking lot, there's one on the bus garage that focuses the underwear.
Okay, thank you, awesome, just wanted to clarify that.
So if we, if we, if there is a student who asks about that, because they had an issue or whatever, are, are we able to go back and look at that footage, like, how long do we keep that footage?
We keep the footage longer than we're supposed to.
Okay.
Because we have the service, or capacity to.
Sure.
But we go back in time and look at the footage.
Okay.
And what's nice about our camera system is it's not a constant roll, so it's, as people are moving, like, if I'm watching the high school, I can see the blue lights light up as someone's walking through the high school, because you can see the paths that they take. So if a car is going one way, you'll see the camera pick it up, and it'll pick up on the side of the building, and then pick up on the other side.
Interesting.
Okay. Interesting, right?
It's about a ninety day.
Gotcha, okay.
It's very entertaining to watch. How did I manage it?
That's about like this budget.
Okay, thank you for those clarifications, Mr. Wamsley, I greatly appreciate it, otherwise that is it on behalf of the students.
And if you have any questions, Joe? Thank you very much, Joe. Okay, next item on our agenda is our superintendent, and we'll just leave a buck take, Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, I'll start with our district upgrade update. This coming Wednesday is the kindergarten roundup, both who have young students who are going to turn five at least by September one. We welcome the class of twenty thirty-eight, and on Thursday, February twenty-seventh, is our preschool roundup with a class of thirty-nine and forty. Both nights dinner will be served at four thirty with the presentation at five o'clock, and then classroom visits immediately following. As Joe mentioned, March fifth and sixth and seventh are half-days of school for parent-teacher conferences. Wednesday and Thursday, conferences are from twelve to three, and Thursday night is from five to eight. We encourage parents to attend, this is the sixth week into our second semester kind of midpoint. On Thursday, March thirteenth, is the BWAC Art Expo, this is our first year participating in the BWAC Art Expo. There's an opening reception from six to seven thirty. Yale High School is hosting the BWAC Art Expo this year. Exhibits will run through March fourteenth to March twenty-first, six to seven thirty each night in the lobbies at the Yale Auditorium area.
Do we, do we need to go to that, was there an invitation, we had to respond?
It's just, it's a, no, it's just an open, it's an open forum.
On Tuesday, March eighteenth, myself and some of the high school students, as well
as either Mrs. Zabel or Mrs. Borwell, will be joining me for the legislative breakfast that's organized by Northern Chamber of Cavern. In election years, typically they bring the elected officials there, so it gives our students enough time to see the holiday of things. This event is gonna focus on some of the elect, the people in the agencies, they're gonna focus on smart transportation, what smart looks like in our county. If you are interested, I believe we still have one more seat for the board members that I think we'd be interested that day. Starts at eight o'clock in the morning, usually done by, I would say by ten, at the latest, the breakfast meeting at Maniations. On Tuesday, eighteenth, will be our community conversation regarding the proposed no increase mileage and bond work. The last one was canceled primarily due to the snow and inclement weather getting people here, so we'll host it at the high school media center beginning at six thirty. We'll have a second one on April twenty-first at Lee Elementary School, as well as the next board meeting, will be all presentation focused on the high school. March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, will be the second annual state of the district presentation, at seven o'clock, invitations will go out. Our goal is this week, the city and I work on them. More information will be given to parents and community members on that day. For a legislative day, the House Education and Workforce Committee held their first meeting of the legislative session last Wednesday. They had a presentation from Michigan Trust, or excuse me, Education Trust Midwest Report, and it was really about unclosing the opportunity divide and addressing the Michigan teacher shortage. I had a chance to look at, watch a part of it. It's pretty interesting, it's nothing that you don't know, we talked about... It talked about the impact of the teacher shortage in the state, and that impact, how that impact is having students and student achievement across the state, particularly in areas that are struggling more for teachers than other areas. Always interested in the budget to see how our legislators prioritize funding these shortages are helping. And we've made a lot of strides in the last couple of years, so my hope is they continue with that support. The committee also took testimony in House Bill four zero six zero, which basically modifies the tax levy for career and technical education programs. It allows intermediate districts to partner with other intermediate districts to provide CT courses that they might not be able to program in, just gives more flexibility. McComb County currently does not levy a CT millage like other counties, and I know if you've gone to some of the county school or association meetings over the past, they talk about how many CT programs are in McComb County versus Oakland, and Oakland has a CT millage, and we are equally as competitive as Oakland in terms of all those offerings. So, it's just something to watch for the future, it gives them flexibility. I don't see that necessarily directing Richmond, but it's just something to watch. The House Appropriations Committee last week had a presentation on Governor Whitmer's twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Some of the highlights of her budget would be an increase in the foundation allowance to ten thousand dollars for both public and charter schools. That's basically a four percent increase. The proposal also calls for a four percent increase to special ed, English language learners, rural and isolated district, at-risk populations, which we talked about here today, or ISDs. It also increases grade start funding to a ten thousand five hundred seventy-five dollar per slot allocation. It eliminates the income cap, allows more four-year-olds to access preschool. So, we're obviously, this, this budget starts a budget season with the House and Senate, so we're watching it very closely from that aspect. The other one we're watching is in thirty-one A, the funding, they're putting, looking at putting it rather than via section where it's subject to a line item every year, to be funded at a hundred fifty dollars, a hundred fifty million, which is about a hundred fifty dollars per pupil going forward. There is some restrictions, and I think this is, I don't know for sure, but my speculation is this is from the Oxford incident, that would allow the state to conduct an independent investigation should any mass casualty events occur, if you choose to take the funding. So, I know there was a lot of news media on who was investigating, the reports that came out after-hack, so. We're watching that, that from a good is locking in that funding rather than means something that could be lying in every veto. The other one that we're watching, though it doesn't directly impact Richmond, and I hope it never does, is a proposal called the New Smart Plan, which focuses on students' metrics and results with transparency. There are not a whole lot of details on it, however, there's two hundred fifty million dollars that have been allocated. Primarily, the funds go to schools that have been identified as, identified for needing improvement or consummative support schools, increasing the number of targeted schools or trying to help with closing that achievement gap. Again, we are not any of those schools, and we never will be, but I'm interested what this student metrics and results with transparency plan is. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I actually have a question for your friend. Has there been any buzz in regards to the presence of executive orders regarding, I mean, amongst those supernatives?
We have, we have generally talked as a group about things that happen legislatively, but we've received no direction or guidance on what those, the impact those orders are. Typically, from a legislative action or executive action, in this case here, for the executive order, the department that's affected, in this case, the US Department, would send guidance down to the schools that you've got to do X, Y, and Z. None of that has come, at least throughout, through our office. Or the Michigan Department, depending how the fundings are, sometimes they funnel that way, and then they go to the Michigan Department. But we haven't gotten any guidance. One of the executive orders that the president signed was regarding ICE and immigration. The guidance we got was from our attorney, not from any State Department or regulations on how we should handle it, should that situation occur in your district. We haven't got any guidance.
Any guidance from our attorney on any of the other executive orders?
I have not checked the online platform that where they kind of, they sent them out, in case you missed it, they keep an online platform through our attorney, so we kind of can go back in probably about last Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday was the last time I checked it, so it came out from that point to today, but I haven't seen anything. There's a lot of, we're watching it, we're monitoring it, don't do anything, don't react until we get more clarification.
So, you haven't heard of any other schools taking anything out or taking any next steps?
I have personally not heard of any schools. I've heard rumors on social media and some things, but I, I don't know what's true and not on some of that social media stuff, so. But locally, I've not heard of anybody that, that has said, not that, if they've done it, not said something, I would, I don't know that.
So, I'm curious, what kind of meetings that have been set in, or the districts have set?
No, I would say, McComb County is more of a sit, wait till we're told this is what you have to do, or what you, or what you're, if they give you a guideline or a parameter of what you can do. There's more questions than there are answers. I would say that, there's a lot of questions. That's all I have.
Any other questions for Mr. Wilson? Great, next item on our agenda is items of interest. Came to she went first best. Margaret?
No, I've got nothing.
Sandy?
Nope, I got nothing.
Danielle?
I'm just full of.
That's okay.
One is kind of a rate, but also feedback, because I know, I remember having mentioned it last week or two about the snowplowing. I think, even though, like you mentioned, it's a little bit more cost to us to use this company this year, I feel like I've seen a night and day difference, and I'm really appreciative. I don't know who does the playgrounds and things and the paths for that, whether it's the company or if that's the janitors, custodians, but it's been much safer, a lot more salt out there, not as slippery, and it's just been much better this year overall, I've noticed, compared to the ice rinks that we had sometimes in the past year.
I would agree with it, we shared that with our company, being they, there's still a lot of paths until they know our campus, they forget that sidewalk is there that they can come back from, but they've been very supportive and they've done a good job.
Yeah, it's been, it's been.
What's doing in our salt?
Ultimate landscaping.
Really? And then, so that's kind of a rate, but also just feedback, since it's a new company this year. But, then the other question I had was, it came up tonight, actually, just regarding the unpaid, the request that we've had, is it standard procedure that the teacher requesting it not just submit a letter? I didn't see anything in the verbiage that you had sent me, an email, but have to come in and present, like, how she had to come, she came to the podium, and from your email, I felt like it's required of them to come to the podium. I know from my own personal experience, I simply just sent a letter, and I'm just curious if, I got lucky that mine was approved when I didn't show up to speak at the board meeting, but I'm curious if that's part of their verbiage that they have to, I, the only concern I have that especially these longer ones tend to be because of premature births, and if we're then exposing, obviously, she felt comfortable enough to bring the baby here to see me, but in other more extreme cases, like, having to come and have that exposure to general public, and that's a good thing of being required to come in, I would have felt, or I do feel that just having a letter, a request would be sufficient. So, I didn't know if that's something that's in the contract, or if it's something that's always been done.
There's actually two parts of the contract, as I said when we were up there, one is prior to the baby, and that language said the board shall grant, so it's more of a formality, because it doesn't give you an option of not to grant.
Right.
This one, it gives you the option of not granting, because it says the board may grant. And so, most of the stuff in a contract is delegated to the superintendent to do. There are a couple of things in, particularly the teacher contract, that's, has to come to the board. I think a lot of people would prefer that process, I'm not saying that's good or bad, because sometimes you want to make sure that objective, is it objective or possible? When I, when I talked to Mrs. Stolucki, I, she kind of, what do I say? I said, well, you don't have to give any personal, I mean, you can talk about, you know, why you're requesting it, it'd be very, because she shared a lot, so, that was her choice, but in this particular case, it's because of the word "may," and you have the option. And the other piece that both of them have is that it has to go through a break. Her original request, as I sent, I think I sent you, and just said a heads up, was she only wanted an eight, eight week, but the way the contract read it, has to go to an actual break, and in this case, it's going to be June.
So, if I'm understanding you correctly, then, because it says "may," meaning that we have that option not to approve it, they don't have to come here, they just are choosing to come here to state their case, so more likely to approve it?
Well, that's my, that's my, that's my follow-up question. Would it have been sufficient for her to just to send us, or send an email and us have that email presented in front of us and us personally review that? Or does, is she required, like, the overnight of the stuff that we present, how to be here in person?
I guess I'm just thinking from a point of view, if it's, if it's not a given, you're, you're requesting an extension of something, or this is an interesting situation, but to me, I, I would really like to see the person standing up here, asking for, to do something that is out of lines of the contract, or, you know, that it's not, it's not a given, because sometimes it puts, it puts a face to the name, you know, sometimes if you, if the name, because quite honestly, I didn't know, I, the last name didn't, but when I saw her, I knew who she was. You know what I'm saying? And I just think as a board member, if you're going to be asking for something out of the realm of what your contract, I just, I just think you should.
But at the same time, what if they're not medically capable, or technically?
But I think.
So, if she's on that, she's technically on a maternity leave right now, and she's, it's part of her FMLA or maternity leave still of her, I don't know what the time, I mean, it's eight weeks for a C-section, but if she's within those, technically, she shouldn't be having any responsibility or even being on school property, or having to correspond via school email or any of those things, because medically, she's out. So, requesting her, I don't know where she's at right now, but if, if she wasn't at, then she's coming, she's being required to come in person, when she's technically out on medical, when she shouldn't be in person.
But, but her time is, she's supposed to be back Wednesday. I, I think that would be different. I get what you're saying, but she's supposed to be coming back Wednesday, and she's asking for an extended, so, I don't know, I just think, you know, maybe you, you ever heard that she can zoom in or something, because I get where you're coming from on that, but I just think it's really important when you're asking for something outside of special circumstances to come to the board.
I was going to say, I was going to say, also, what if we had a question, and she was not, or whoever was not physically here to answer that question that we had, would that make a difference on our decision of voting yes or no?
Well, and who knows?
Yeah, who knows? So, I guess I, I think of that part too.
That's why I'm wondering, would it be sufficient, though, if somebody chose to just go the route of submitting a letter either through Mrs. Jar or to you, to just say, I'm requesting this time, I either A, can't make the time, or B, don't want to be exposed to whatever it is, the medical condition that's being related? Would it be sufficient for somebody, obviously coming and be able to answer questions, that gives a bigger picture, it gives that assurance, but if somebody, I don't even want to call it, wanted to take the risk, because I, I am impressed that she came, because I, I probably wouldn't have just for the sake of exposure. But, would it be sufficient if somebody just submitted a letter and not showed up, or is it required that they come and speak?
There's nothing in the contract that says you have to stand in front of the board and present. It would be more of practice that has been established over the years. We had one in December, a couple of years ago, the language was similar. We had a parapro that came up here to present an extension. Those are two off the top of my head, I'm sure there's been more. So, I guess it'd be more of the practice. So, when we get into the contract negotiations, if this is something the board wants to consider as a parameter to give me, in terms of, do you want, we have that discretion? I mean, because the, the light word that led up to this is this justice wasn't her and I talking. We'd had multiple emails, we had a conversation with the administrators and Billy, and there was multiple people in this very short time that had a conversation to get to a point of a recommendation to you guys, and obviously, as a board, you can honor or not, honor that recommendation, it's your choice, but if that's something in the future, I think the language needs to be changed. Because there's often reference in here, you have to, in one of the other sections, you have to submit an application. Well, there is no application, you know, it's an email that I get. So, there's all sorts of cleanup language that, that we're going to have to address, and this could be one of those that we look at.
I feel like it's different, because I know when I read the word when you sent it, if it's like extending their education, I know in these, you know, T programs or whatever, versus a medical condition or something pregnancy-related, only because I agree, I would want them here if I had questions, I can't get questions answered, they're not here, but at the same time, what if I have a question, they're not comfortable answering it, because it's a medical thing that they don't want? You know, videotaped. I feel like there should be some discretion, maybe for medical stuff, even of that, or, I don't know. The medical part just feels weird to me, because even though she didn't have to share everything that she did, what if a board member asked a question she wasn't comfortable answering? I just think that puts them in a really hard spot, because this is something they believe they need, but we're asking them to put their personal information out there for everybody to hear, I don't know, I have mixed feelings about that.
But I don't think we are asking them to put their personal, she chose to.
I'm saying, what if, what if I asked a question?
Yeah, but.
That goes to relationship.
No, you can't.
Just a second.
But then what's the point of the B, if we can't ask questions?
Because we, because we, we really got all the info, really, what she talked about, we got that.
So, then we shouldn't need them here?
Because we're really not asking. I was just asking whether it's required of her to be here, but it sounds like it's, the verbiage is not in the contract that it's required for her to be here, she just, she chose to, but I, I found that by the wording of the correspondence that was going out, it seemed like it was like, not highly suggestive, but the way the verbiage was, was that, like, you're kind of required to, you know, to be put on the agenda in order, so make sure that you're able to make it and things, and especially if it was last minute, and, or maybe it's a nap time, or feeding time, or whatever time, you know, like, that just doesn't make it convenient. But she didn't have to be here, and that, that was really all, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't something that was required of her to be here, especially in a medical type situation, so, that's all. But that's it, it answers my question that they were, she wasn't required.
Okay, she chose. We good?
Thank you.
You're all set, Danielle?
Yeah.
Sarah?
I have nothing.
And I can just.
Oh, sorry. This book, a couple of meetings ago, you brought it.
Yeah.
And you asked us if we all received it, and that it was very good. I'm willing to share this book with anyone who didn't receive it, because it actually is where everybody, and it.
It really talks about contract negotiations.
That's sort of tough base here in the teacher, with the teacher's contracts, and what it does is it gives like a whole backstory to the alummities, the whole, just forethought and all that, leading up to where we are today with teachers and what they're looking for versus what they were then, and it's just, it's incredible book. So, I'd be willing to share it. So I'd be willing to share it if you guys didn't receive it. And I just have the newest one, too. I think it's quarterly, or it's not every month?
No.
If anybody wants to read it, because.
I just, I just need to feel, I need to say this.
Say, say what you want.
When you read that, take it with a grain of salt. It's a perspective. The company that publishes it is not always an advocate for public schools. Given that, now, obviously, you got to look for the facts and so forth, and the challenges. So, you know, as with anything, there's another side of a story that may not be told. I just want, I just need to say, there's another side to a lot of the story.
Even though, what I took from the article is it did give a detail, this is what the teachers, what we had, what we could not negotiate, and that now we have to, and for me, that just kind of gave me some history, which I thought, for me, was good.
I feel biased reading it. I mean, just to see the history.
Yeah, I just thought that was good to know.
Think, think of from this, was like, early on in education, salaries weren't great, but there was always a benefit in the long-term retirement. The benefit in the long-term retirement is what legislators have attacked and taken away over the last several years. So the only thing someone has to do is now fight for salaries, which blame them for that. Problem that we have in our state is all the purse strings are up at Lance, they're not sitting here in front of you. As you saw tonight, we're, you know, they decide to send that bill over, there's a seven, potentially a seven percent increase that goes up on, it's out of our control. So, and, so, I mean, it's just, it's just interesting when you look at the history, and I think I shared it the old, well, I've been a couple of years, there's a, I think I have it right here. Keep it with me. I don't know if I'm getting a side tangent, but I've said this is, I've been in education too long. But here's all the mandates over the course of decades in public education. So you look at, what, from 1900 all the way to 2000? And it's just more and more that's added on, and most of these are not even funded. And so when you talk, when you start criticizing public schools about their scores, when you got to do X, Y, and Z, that's taken away from time. So I'm just always cautious when I hear, oh, sorry, and that, that group, don't get me wrong, they've got a lot of factual information, they're, they're a good source of getting at least starting points of information, but they haven't in the past always been a proponent of public education. And you and I have talked about, you know, the, you know, the lobbyists and out there want the, that public dollars to be in the, in the private sector, because it's a market that opens up. And I'm always cautious of when people open businesses up with kids, and their purpose isn't for kids, it's about profit. So anyways, I, I did, I did read that, and you're right, it does, it does give you perspective and historical.
If it's anybody.
Yeah, true.
Anything else, Candace, are you good?
No, I think that was it.
Okay, I have a couple of things. Everybody received the board evaluation. I'm just asking that you look through it, mark your choices, and when we meet next Monday, we will be going through that. Keep your comments, you can write comments or whatever on it. There's, we also will be talking about goals for us, so as you're going through it, you see something you feel like we, as a group, would like to work on. We had three goals last year, so I'm assuming we're going to kind of do the same thing. Also, policy number 4601, Brian informed me that we now have it loaded up. It is our superintendent's succession plan, it's not called that, I forget what it's called, but it is up there, so I'm asking you to please review that. We may be fine with what's there, and we'll leave it, or if we want to change it in any way. So please make sure you review 4601 before next Monday. I only had one person reply to staff appreciation, and that was Candace. We are probably, at this point, we're not looking at doing a, I don't know, dinner or something, because I don't know if we have time to get it together or not.
Well, that's true. Because they asked the question, and you hadn't responded. So I was waiting for your response.
Yeah, I asked a question. I didn't respond, I asked a question.
And I responded.
You didn't. I don't know if you didn't respond to everybody, I mean, you just.
Oh, I responded to.
You didn't respond.
I did, right?
Yes, you didn't respond.
I'm thinking, wait a minute. Okay.
And the response was, "In lieu of."
Yeah, so the thought is, we, when we, when I met with Brian, we talked about it, and we don't know if we have enough time to put it together at this point to do a whole meal like we had been doing. So we, we kicked around some ideas about getting teachers a T-shirt with their.
Not teachers, staff.
I'm sorry, thank you. The staff with a number on the back of how many years they've been with the district. That was just one thought and one suggestion. So I'm, I'm looking for a group or someone who'd like to sit down and kick some ideas around.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm just going to be completely candid, I'm a little disappointed in, in us as a board, that we're not, that we don't have something or can't make the time to make something happen for the staff, we don't have. And it's not a personal attack, I mean, that's also on myself, obviously, I'm a board member, too. I'm just saying, like, I, I feel like we've had really good attendance the last couple of years, we've had really good feedback the last couple of years. I think it's a real positive thing to look forward to, and I think to replace it with a T-shirt is not even fair, it doesn't even care, that's my opinion.
I would agree with you, but that was just one thought. And you could add something to it or whatever.
Sure.
What? The idea, when, when the conversation happened after the last meeting about would we be able to put something together?
Yep.
We did, we did the shirts. We might have been on board when we, when we did the shirts for the, it's been a few years since we did it, and did some lottery tickets. But the thought was, everybody will get something. Not everybody comes to the dinner, so that's where the shirt idea came from. That was me, when I said, well, something about that, because if we're not able to put something together, because you are right, it has been great, it has been fun, all of that, but this way, there would be something that we know would reach everyone. So if you have a better idea than that, would.
And that's what I'm looking for. Who wants to sit down and have a discussion?
Well, I do. I have a suggestion, and I brought it to Brian's attention.
Well, Brian's on the board.
I don't know, I don't know. Who's a part of this discussion you guys had.
Because Brian is a staff member who gets on, so he shouldn't be part of deciding anything about what he gets.
What was your suggestion?
It was like a mystery dinner thing, because I just put this on from my work for our Christmas party, and it actually was, was pretty fun. It was a lot of fun, actually. And they will come to our venue.
So what's, so this is obviously.
They will come to our venue and coordinate the meals and do all that, like, you don't have to.
So this mystery thing, it's not anything that they have to participate in, because I've been to parties where I've had to be a participating member of those particular, like, I get a character, and I have to act them. Yeah, that's not, that's not what you're talking about here, right?
No, it is. They have their own actors, but then.
They also get.
They also, like, like, they ask you. It's not everyone.
It's voluntary, right?
It's not everyone at the table, but they ask, like, they probably, I feel like they were walking around trying to see who was more.
Outgoing.
Yes, yeah, don't get me wrong, I would kind of though.
Just, just.
Yeah.
Sarah, we have done, the last two years, we've had a band play and that kind of thing. So I think it needs to be, who besides Candace wants to.
Sit down and take a look, some ideas.
Sitting here around the table at nine o'clock.
That's, thank you.
Talking about.
I agree, but I have a simple question, because this is my first year back on board. What is the attendance rate at these dinners? I know you're saying not everybody comes, but how many people come?
First year, I don't know, but last year, more people. I don't remember the number, I, they're, they're pretty good numbers.
Okay.
I don't remember the exact number, so.
Because to me.
I think it was over a hundred, it was more than half.
Because to me, if they don't, if, I mean, if they can't attend, that is unfortunate, we're not going to please everybody's schedule, but it's an option if they don't choose to come. I think if that, in my opinion, and, I mean, we could always, you know, get some feedback for next year, but I think that would be maybe more value than, I was saying, just a T-shirt, but just a T-shirt.
Well, and the T-shirt was just a fact, it could have been.
No, and I think.
But I'm just thinking, because we could teach her and bring in food eateries or something.
Because we had done it for everybody, so let's, let's just.
Okay, who would like to?
Okay.
Creating a committee.
Okay, so who wants to be on?
Okay, I mean, I'll, I would, I've done it the last two years, but I will do it again, so that something happens.
Okay, so we have Candace and Sandy. Anybody else?
We can only have one more.
Can only have one more, because you can't have four.
If we have, if we have an.
You want to be on it, you can be on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can be on it, Joe.
More busy.
Because you're. Joe's round.
I am not very creative, but I can help, once it's planned, I can help.
Okay, Sarah's on the two.
But I, I'm not creative. I'll put that out there.
Okay, so we have a committee. Our committee is Candace, Sandy, Joe, and Sarah. Do you want to be on it?
No, I can't, because you can't.
Oh, now we have four. Did you want to be on it?
I want to. I will do it.
Danielle, how about you?
No, I, my question was, if, if it's an event, is there a specific date that it would happen? Because it always tends to fall on or around Mother's Day, which also happens to be my birthday, and then I'm just out for the week, so I can't do it anyway, so I don't want to.
Well, we have to see what the date.
Yeah, yeah.
We have to see what the committee. So do you want to be on? Because Sarah here is.
I'm not, but I will. I'm not creative either, Sarah, that's why.
Okay, guys, decide, quick.
Go on, Sarah, you can do it.
Okay, I'll do it.
Okay, Sarah's out.
But don't respect creativity.
Okay, so Candace, Sandy, Joe, and Sarah will be on our committee. You guys will do some investigating and find out, give us some options.
We have a budget?
We do have a budget.
Okay, you guys know the budget?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, it's the same, it's the same, what it's done in the years past.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you on that one. Let me see, I did that one, I did that one, I did that one. Tomorrow, there, I believe there's four board members going to the county meeting.
All seven.
All seven of us are going? Anybody want a carpool? If you do, see me after the meeting. For this, they could, well, I have seven vehicles down there. Okay, that's all that I have. Since our last, next item is our public comments, since the last board meeting.
I'm sorry, good.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, I just had another question about something else that you mentioned. It was got a little sidetracked. Um, just, so the next Monday is not a regular meeting?
No.
Because you kind of made.
We're going to do a workshop, I'm sorry.
At six thirty.
At six thirty, okay. Okay.
And then the calendar and outlook still has the twenty-four.
As a meeting in March.
I'll get it cleared up.
No, it doesn't.
I'm pretty sure he pulled it, something to pull it off to. I thought I remember getting an email that said it was needed, we did.
Well, we'll check, we'll, we'll get it cleared up. Okay, public comments. Since the last board meeting, the board did, or some members of the board did receive an email from a teacher regarding an attendance concern, this email was directed to Mr. Wensley, who dealt with the issue. There was no public comments from the last board meeting that we need to address. At this time, any member of the public may address the board, please sign in and state your name. You'll have three minutes to address the board. Are there any public comments? Maybe no public comments, we will move on. Our next item on our agenda, I'm looking for a motion for the approval of a proposed overnight extended trip request. I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the overnight/extended student trip to Detroit, Michigan, as presented at the February tenth, two thousand twenty-five Board of Education meeting and outlined in the attached documentation. Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six preschool tuition and childcare rates.
Motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve an increase to the substitute rates effective the twenty twenty.
No, not substitute, no.
It's.
Preschool.
Preschool.
Oh, this.
Oh, could they have shut it down? They should have.
Okay, is it in here?
Yeah, I don't know, just.
Okay. I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the three- and four-year-old tuition-based preschool and childcare rates and corresponding registration fees for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year, as presented at the February tenth, two thousand twenty-five Board of Education meeting and outlined in the attached documentation.
Do I have, does that mark or does that? Thank you. Any discussion?
The integration that was in that backup was what you requested last time, so I'm thank Mr. Gibson for pulling that together for the cost of the name or difference.
So for the three, the four-year preschool, we are doing five days a week, but it's their half days?
Correct. Four-year-old tuition basis, five days, half day, four-year-old full day, GSI, this full day.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion for a twenty-five, twenty-six substitution rates. I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve an increase to the substitute rates effective the twenty, two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year, as discussed on January twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-five, and presented at the February tenth, two thousand twenty-five Board of Education meeting and outlined in the attached documentation. Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion?
Yes, I do. Couple things. So for the general education, the ed prior area, I know that we just brought in, is that the area where we brought in the five extra for the kindergarten?
Yeah, the five that were brought in, one resigned, the fifth one is filled by a substitute, but the intent, so those wouldn't carry over next year unless we absolutely need them, because we're not going to hire a teacher. They were brought in because we didn't hire, we didn't go to six sections.
So would they be considered long-term subs? I guess is my biggest sense, we brought them in as, to fill that spot, as of the year, right?
No, because some of them, I don't know if I'll stop, but they may not qualify to be a substitute teacher in the district.
No, we hired them as employees. You're asking, were they long-term subs this year?
Right.
No, we hired them as employees.
No, no. No, they are physically, sorry, misunderstood, they are Richmond employees. The four that are remaining are Richmond. The one position that I've mentioned to the board, that's two people filling it, or directed three subs, I don't know, is through edge of staff.
Gotcha, that's what I thought.
So it's not a district employee, and the, just so you know, the, the union agreed to not fill it with a person, so we wouldn't have to lay that person off.
Do you have another question?
I did have one other question. So with the, the biggest topic, I mean, we had a staff member come in and ask for an extension, which then would extend the current, so that we have in that position.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
Some say yes, that would be the, the easiest transition, but not, right, sit down with the team, based on the board's decision, but yes, that would be the easiest transition, doesn't necessarily that is the person.
And that would be in an, almost an entire school year of that. And that would be in an, almost an entire school year of that.
Correct.
Employee count.
Since November nineteenth, or some fashion of that.
So, again, I just, going back, and, you know, if we can approve this, it's fine. My point, the point we had talked about this, was about that position, and somebody being in there throughout vacations, throughout snow days, throughout, and none of that being collected. So the idea that somebody now could be in it, another extension, um, we're looking at almost an entire year full, and I, I, I love that we increased the pay, um, but again, now we're looking through possible spring break, and, um, now we've gone through Christmas break, spring break, all those days of no pay, um, and that same person could potentially be, you know, taking on all the same responsibilities.
The teachers don't get paid on breaks.
No.
They don't get paid, and neither do the administrators. They get their calendars based on days worked. The teacher's calendar is a hundred and eighty-four days, and those are spread out, so on Christmas break, do they get their checks spread? Yes, most of them do, at least through the twenty pays and then the twenty-four, or an administrator might be two hundred and five, two ten, twenty. Secretaries don't get paid on breaks. They actually, a couple of years ago, we went to time work, time paid, in terms of, they don't spread their pay.
Are they able to use their vacation or sick time to compeniate for that, though?
Not to get paid for breaks, no, they can use their sick time, or personal, like anything, each group, secretaries can use it for snow days, transportation can use it for snow days, or they have in their contract, this earned snow day. If you show up and work thirty days or forty-five days, you get a day that's kind of banked there. Cafeteria workers have that. So each group, like administrators do not have vacation time, they have personal, but they, I'm gonna pick on Deander, Deander can say, I wanna use my personal days for these five days during spring break and get five days of it, no, they don't, that's not how their contract works.
Plus, her sons are not contracted, they're not a contract.
Right, right. Well, even the, the approval for, the increase for next year, it still is, during those breaks, even if it's a long-term sub, yes, they're getting more in the daily rate, but they're not getting paid for those breaks either next year. The rate increase is just a rate increase for the days that they're there.
That's what I'm, I don't think that's that, that's that different, though, from other professions out there. I feel like if, there's a lot of professions out there where you're not there that day for whatever reason, because it's a holiday, because that you just don't get paid for that day. You know, if you don't work that day, you don't get paid that day, I'm thinking of...
It's not most trade contracts.
Exactly.
If you don't work, you don't get paid.
If you're a hairdresser and you don't work that day, you're not getting paid that day. There's no bank anywhere that you're saying, I'm gonna cash this in, it's, if there's someone in the seat and you're doing the, you know, so I feel like that's not that different, so I'm hoping...
I, I think if I'm hearing you correctly, based on what Margaret said last time about bringing back, what would it cost to bring them back in-house and that, that total, I think that's the conversation, if that's what the board wants to do, because if you're bringing them back in-house, then, then we are looking at things like, do we give them holiday pay, do we give them snow day or, or whatever?
I think I was just trying to bring up, this is kind of like an example, right, kind of extending, just because this happened here tonight, it's like, you know, an example of, I know what I was talking about last meeting, but I, I, I just wanted to make that statement, that's all for the...
Perfect.
Anybody else? Um, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for the motion for the approval of our candidate.
I'm sure you can select Ursula. There we go. Wester Rogers from Romulus Community Schools, uh, for our, I'm sorry, as original community schools candidate for the Michigan Association of School Boards, Region Eight Board Club Directors, and authorize the superintendent or his heads in need to cast the ballot for said candidate by March of the twenty-twenty-five.
Good, thank you, Ms. Margaret, I'm sorry. Um, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of the REA unpaid leave of absence request. Oh, good.
I was gonna say, there was no...
Yeah, I have.
A motion to accept the recommendation of superintendent and approve Polina Stilecki's unpaid leave request, extending her leave back since Thursday, February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, to the end of the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five school year, as outlined in the documentation.
Support. Thank you, any discussion?
No, just...
Go ahead.
Go ahead, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, I just had, I guess, my question, um, was, does she have sick or vacation time to prove that she can use, that she, she's foregoing, um, to use on daytime off?
She has, I wrote my memory, because I don't know the exact number, because of where she started, less than ten days, because she's used all of them for the last, for her last leave that she's been on.
And, um...
So just so everybody knows, um, and this might be a point that Angela, our payroll and benefits person, sat down and calculated, well, this, what the impact would be for her, would reduce salary, the insurance costs that she would pick up, because the, the contract says the district doesn't pay that, and that information has been sent to her before she came tonight, so she's aware of the impact that's gonna be, but there is a few days she does have left in her bank, over the years that she's worked here, that she still has.
And then, um, did she have to provide a doctor's note?
For the, for the, this leave, this leave, if, if an individual goes on FMLA, and I can't say if this person did or didn't, but if they do, they have to provide that documentation. In this particular case, she's just asking to take an unpaid leave to take care of her child, which is a section, fine in the contract, so that's what she's requesting, so there wouldn't be a doctor's note that I would need for that. I mean, it could be, Sarah could, if she was a teacher, could say, I, she has kids, so I wanna take care of my kids, and I'll just go unpaid for six months, or the board do it. Doesn't have to be necessarily tied, you know, more personal after the break, but no, there's no doctor's note tied to this leave.
And then, lastly, I would just like to, um, recommend that we try to keep the same educator in that classroom, and I speak on experience, because two years ago, my son was in the fifth grade, and I met his teacher at the double day, and she was, you know, out here, and by the time school started, she had her baby and never returned the whole year, and we, everyone thought she was coming back, and she never is, she got the extension, and, um, there were a lot of teachers in and out of the classroom, and, um, throughout